All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for being here, all of you. I hope that you had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Could we begin, please, by receiving a motion to come out of closed session?
Come on in.
Second.
All right. All in favor of coming out of closed session, please raise your right hand. And let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join us on the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I would like for Mrs. Amy Ivy, the lead school psychologist, to come before us. We are ready for you, Mrs. Ivy.
Good afternoon, or good night, either way, whichever. It's a pleasure to be able to address you. I come to represent the school psychologists from Wayne County Schools. And I wanted to take a second to address you, to just so you would know what our role and function is for the students of Wayne County and for the parents and other members. Your school psychology department is small, but we serve as a backbone component to your school crisis response team, along with the counselors and the social workers. Our training is diverse, not only in academic but behavioral supports, as well as suicide intervention and crisis response. We would like to say that we reached, have reached national ratios in Wayne County. Unfortunately, there's not that much money in the whole state, probably, so... But we continue to push forward and to try to hire new and diverse psychologists to be able to best support our students. We are currently sitting at eight, which includes two interns, one of which has come from Michigan to be a part of our faculty, and one has come from Virginia, Radford, actually, University of Radford. So we're very glad to have those. We have taken on interns every single year, so we continue to try to grow our faculty, and including working with East Carolina University to bring on practicum students, and to, like I said, to make our group as strong as possible. I just wanted to share with you that we saw over, saw and touched over 700 children last year through the evaluation process. That includes preschool children, ages two years, nine months, all the way up to ages 22. We are there for your teachers when they are in crisis, staff members when there's one that passes, or when a student passes. We're part of your first line of defense. So I just wanted to let y'all know that we are here to support you, to support all initiatives, including MTSS, which is moving forward in 2020, as y'all are aware, and to continue to support the students in their mental and behavioral health, as well as their academic. I've prepared a few things for you. So School Psychology Awareness Week was actually earlier in the month, but the theme for School Psychology Awareness Week was unlocking potential and how school psychologists can help you level up. It's a gaming reference that we went with this year. So I've made a small packet, and each one of these includes a key, because each of you can be the key to helping students in our district to level up their social, emotional health, their academic health, and other areas. So I hope you'll accept these as mementos of gratitude and appreciation. It's also with the school psychologist, so if you have any questions, that's in there as well. And that's, that's just one, wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of your interns, are we able to pay those interns, or is this a school credit type?
Yes, ma'am. So that is one of the reasons why we have been so lucky to receive interns, is that we do pay master's level teacher salary, which is not a full psychologist salary, but it is what's considered very competitive. And I'm so glad that we've had that opportunity, and I am thankful, because that does make us very competitive. We also have been able to, in some respects, allow for a better internship experience for our interns, because they do only serve two schools. The national ratio is one psychologist to five to 700 students. That's the national ratio. Across the state, it continues to be about one to 3,200, which is overwhelming when you think about everything that we're supposed to do in a comprehensive role. But by having our students, our interns, serve only two schools, that's a better ratio, and it gives them that chance to be better in their skills and to have appropriate supervision levels, so that they can be successful. And we've actually managed to keep a great number of our interns. Everyone that is part of our staff now was an intern at some point in our district, including me. So we must do a decent job. But thank you for allowing us to have that, that financial ability, because a lot of, that is one thing that draws a lot of our out-of-state students, is that opportunity for funding.
Any other comments or questions? I want to thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
And thank the psych, other psychologists. Are any others here, Mrs. Ivy?
There were. One of our interns is actually here.
Well, would you have, would you introduce him?
I will. This is Aaron Uberger. He is from Radford. He is, this is his first year with us. And actually, we met with his professor today, and he was very pleased with the situation that we have here. And Aaron is doing a phenomenal job. He's serving Brogdon Middle School and Fremont this year. So giving him kind of a diverse look at the county, and his professor seemed very interested in that.
Yeah, my professor drove all the way down here from Virginia to just meet with us for a couple hours today. And he was really pleased with what you guys have been able to provide the interns. So it's definitely appreciated, and I thank you.
Well, thank you very much for choosing us.
No problem.
All right. Again, thank you for all that you do. All right. Dr. Yvette Mason and Mrs. Felicia Brown, presentation on Title II program.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Felicia Brown, our HR director. And we're bringing to you our annual Title II Part A Improving Teacher Quality presentation for our annual budget for the 18, 19 school year. The purpose of the Title II Part A Improving Teacher Quality is to increase student achievement by improving teacher and principal quality. We have goals under those areas that we are submitting for approval through DPI. And our first goal is that we are providing effective support for all of our beginning teachers through our support program, our Beginning Teacher Support Program. We currently have 296 beginning teachers in our Beginning Teacher Support Program. To support those beginning teachers, we have 84 paid mentors that are selected by an application process from our principals. We provide additional mentors at each of the low-performing schools to support the numbers of beginning teachers that may be at those schools. We have monthly mentor meetings and district-level beginning teacher and mentor meetings that provide strategies and opportunities and goals to support our beginning teachers. We also provide continuous collaboration among our principals and mentors for evic, for effective beginning teacher support, along with implementation of a five-day pre-service orientation for all lateral entry teachers. Among higher, all of our lateral entry teachers must complete a five-day pre-service orientation prior to entering into the classroom. Our goal, too, is to support recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers. We collaborate with a unique amount of colleges and universities to expand our student-teacher process and opportunities. We also provide our teacher internships, and we recruit new graduates through an early interview process annually. We participate in national and out-of-state job fairs, but with EdWeek, Education Week, and we also have an onsite via virtual interview where we partner with our EPI and participate to recruit national, foreign, international teachers. We offer a reimbursement and free test prep sessions for our Praxis and Pearson tests to support our teachers with the ongoing changes through licensure, where many of our beginning teachers have to take Praxis tests. And we also offer, that's unique here to Wayne County Public Schools, a $2,000 sign-on bonus for teachers employed in our hard-to-staff areas of math, science, exceptional children, and the foreign languages. And currently this year, we have hired 49 teachers and issued 49 bonuses as of this year for those areas. Under Goal Three, we are targeting professional development. We provide differentiated professional development for our lateral entry teachers and beginning teachers. This year, we have consulted with EduConsulting, which is an area that we have focused on with a previous survey asking our beginning teachers what additional professional development did they need. This year, EduConsulting is focusing on cultural, responsive pedagogy, lesson planning, instructional strategies, and also a data dig, looking at instructional data. During this time of professional development, we have also supported our teachers with a professional resource called the Wildcard Book by Wade and Hope King. And EduConsulting, firm resources, is also supporting that through our professional development. In the Wildcard, it provides engaging strategies for our teachers to use in the classroom. We also provide leadership professional development for our mentors, strategies, provided to them how to target and support our beginning teachers, as well as additional support from our district beginning teacher coordinators that meet with our mentors and POCs at the school level. On our final page, this is the amount funded this year for the Title II Part A budget. The amount is $717,942. This is $23,724 less than the 17, 18 school year. And with our budget, you see that we have allocated how we will support the spending for this year for all of those goals and areas provided. This supports our site-based mentors, national board certification and support testing, our beginning teacher coordinators, our digital teaching and learning coach, professional development supplies and materials, our most popular beginning teacher workroom, where they come and get free resources and materials, lamination that they can use, so that our teachers do not have to spend their money. We also provide the New Teacher Network of Professional Development, our HR specialists in Title II support, and ongoing recruitment and retention with bonuses, job fairs, test-prepped sessions, and reimbursement. So this is our annual federal Title II Part A funding and our goals that we're supporting this year for the 18, 19 school year. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, comments?
Questions?
All right, Ms. Henderson?
Dr. Mason?
Yes, sir.
In February of 2018, we've had a motion on our, a motion was passed by this board to reduce the number of lateral entry and beginning teachers at our low-performing schools. Can you tell me if we have made any drastic reductions in those positions in those schools?
I can get you the numbers for all of those schools. We are certainly working towards that and trying to support that, but I can get you the numbers.
Okay, I would greatly appreciate that. Secondly, I noticed in your presentation, you speak to these as goals. To me, they, they appear to be more or less strategies toward a goal. And so I was wondering, could you tell me, what is the outcome that you really want to achieve after implementing all of these?
Well, our teachers just participated in a mini-conference, and a lot of them, all of them completed a survey. So they gave us feedback towards the professional development, the support of the mentors as well. So we're looking at ongoing implementation of our strategies that we're implementing to see if our teachers are providing and getting the support. And so we are looking at, are they being supported by the professional development? Are they being supported by their mentors? So we are constantly getting feedback from all of the areas that we're implementing, and asking them as well, what else do they need that we can provide them? And that's why some of the areas that you see here have changed because of their feedback, specifically of what they need in professional development.
So with what you said, then you, you are focusing really on recruitment and then offering support for retention, and hopefully, then that will provide us the teacher and principal quality, so that we can improve the student achievement level across the district.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Mason, you mentioned the professional development, supplies, materials, workroom. You mentioned specific laminating materials and that type of thing. 144, 431.
Yes, sir.
Is, is that a workroom set up in each school? Or is that a centralized workroom that they can come to, to do things in the county?
It is, it is a centralized workroom. And Rebecca Bishop, would you like to speak to them about some happenings with that? Rebecca Bishop is our beginning teacher coordinator, and they oversee and man that orchestration at School Street Elementary.
Good evening. We can, the central location is at the, in, on the other side of the Professional Development Center. And that is where Jenna and I have our little space. Generally, we have the workroom open, available to the beginning teachers. It's available every Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and then on some Thursdays, depending upon our meeting schedule. We have a, let me see if I can pull up the data. We have a sign-in sheet, where every time the beginning teacher comes in, we do track their attendance and how much is being, you know, how many, how it's being utilized. And we usually, on Tuesdays, we have a, we have what we call our, our old faithfuls. We have a lot of the same BTs that come in and utilize those resources. But as we're spreading the word, and we're getting out there, and, and other beginning te, the ones that come talk about the resource room, we're definitely seeing a lot, a lot of new faces and a lot more participation. And then we get a lot of great feedback about how, you know, I've never seen this before. You know, I've never heard of this in any of, of the other districts. You know, I may have worked in a different district, and we've never had these resources. So it is definitely something that our teachers feel is very valuable.
So you're there, oh, you're there to assist them also with that?
Yes, yes, there's a, I'm sorry.
What percentage of beginning teachers, you were talking about 296 teachers this year, what percentage have you seen use the facility so far this, this year?
Um, I, we have, I haven't run those numbers at this time, but like I said, we do track. Every time they come in, they have a sign-in sheet, so I can certainly get that information for you.
You know, the reason that I'm asking that is, we as a board, constantly, each one of us, and, and we all hear from teachers in the community that, that put a lot of their own money and their own funds in their classrooms, and, and we all know that they do. But I think it's, it's very good. I know several years ago, I said on the Beginning Teacher of the Year Board, choosing the Beginning Teacher of the Year, and I had, I was really amazed at the amount of comments that the teachers, the beginning teachers had had when they did their interviews about, about how this school system provided for them the way none other had. And I remember in particular, one beginning teacher that had taught seven years at Wa, in Washington, D.C., and she said she had no mentoring whatsoever, no, no resource that she could go and, and try to find answers out, plus materials as well. So I think it's a great thing that we're doing it. I wish we could do it for every single teacher in the school system, but, and, and that's something this, this board might consider more of in the future. But I understand that you're doing that with Title II money, and, and it's got to be allocated and directed. But I, I would like to, to know what percentage Mike would be using those facilities. I think that's very important, that they've got that type of an asset, you know, that they can, they can put their hands on and get help, that they need, they all need to be utilizing that facility. Maybe, maybe just two afternoons a week might not be a good, and might be a good fix to be able to do it four afternoons a week or something, if that's, if that's, you know, if that's a possibility, if we can get them to use it.
May I ask you, what are your work hours?
Um, the same, I, we're eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, so why is it only open two days a week?
Um, because Jenna and I both are in schools, and we do, we're working with mentors and beginning teachers.
Okay. I understand. Any other comments or questions?
Comment?
Yes.
I would hope that in, in the future, one of the things that we might look at, since there is a major focus on professional development, how do we take that professional development and make sure that we are getting gains from that professional development? How are we tracking how the teacher was prior to the professional development versus after that training has happened? Do we have any kind of data that would help us to determine whether or not that was an effective professional development program for us?
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Mason, the information that we have requested, we'd like to know the, the lateral entry and beginning teachers at each school. And we want that data, along with maybe the percentage of our 296 beginning teachers that are using the workroom. Could you send that to every board member, please?
Yes, ma'am. And I encourage you all, if you would like to come by the workroom, come by School Street and take a tour and see all the things that have been bought there. Chromebooks, they have a plethora of things that they utilize. And there's some good work in there, and also some good networking and collaboration among teachers as well. So please come by and see our teachers.
On Tuesdays, three to five.
Tuesdays, three to five, for any time. We can let you in there. We can let you, I've got a key. I can take you by there.
All right, Dr. Mason is going to remain, and she has a presentation, Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan for 2018, 2019.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. 5:30. We have our speakers. Okay. You want to do that? Yeah, but I'm asking you to.
Sure.
Okay, well, Ms., Dr. Mason, would you just hold on?
I can hold on.
Let us do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's time for our board's requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review, review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the receptionist's desk in the lobby 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist's desk in the lobby. The basket will, will be collected at 5:00 p.m., and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at 5:30 p.m. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairperson shall call time on any presentation which exceeds the three-minute time limit. Organization or group, organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organization or group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or perform, performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under state and federal privacy laws. The first individual requesting to speak is Iris Robinson, and she's representing herself as a parent. And she has, as a topic, she has a question on the ISD and suggestion on any plan versus takeover.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Normally, I write out what I have to say, but it, it behooves me to mention a fact that ISD is working to do the takeover. In fact, a week ago or so, they had a dinner at Brita Heaven, but in attendance was mostly children, no parents. So there's an issue there with parents. Now, the other question is, what is your plan that you have set for to implement avoiding the takeover, improving the program and the system? And I, I do want to comment on another thing. Actually, it's a suggestion, and I'm only going to take a few minutes. I pointed out to ISD at this meeting that they had, why can't we improve the program that we presently have? I even suggested that they work with the system that we have versus the takeover. So is there anything in the works right now to make the adjustments, so that our children don't go lacking?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Robinson.
Okay, next requesting to speak is John Peacock, and he's speaking as a concerned parent of Wayne County. And his topic is making proud choices.
I would say good evening, but she's already said that. I will say that I'm recovering from a Thanksgiving, which was fun, and went to Charlotte to see Jaren play football this weekend, so that was wonderful. I say Cougar Pride. But I'm listening, a little bit of pride I'm losing on the curriculum we're using for sex ed, you know, education in this county. I'm coming to you as two sides. I used to come in this room with my mother when she was past chairman of the city school board years and years ago. So I understand the job you do. I appreciate it's hard. She'd come home, the stuff she would tell us, some things she couldn't tell us, because you don't tell children these things. You just don't talk, you just don't discuss it. That leads me to this program we're actually incorporating now for sex ed, education. As a parent, I'm very concerned, because I know it's been approved years ago. I know what's in it. Somebody came to me and presented it to me. I read it, and my mouth dropped. So, but on your side, I understand, there's policy and procedures. It takes time to make changes. There's a wave that's coming. I'm coming to you today as a, as a friend of the school board, of this county. There's too many black eyes right now on this school system. We don't need another one right now. So what you can do right now is address this curriculum and change it. I know a lot about this curriculum. From my background, I've researched this curriculum, probably a little bit better than some of your people in the office have researched it. And it's not good for our demographics. It does serve a purpose, but I'm not going to sit here today and attack that. I'm going to give you the opportunity, because I know what's coming behind me. They've been calling me, and it's not just one district. It's every district. I don't want a Fayetteville happening here. I want Charlotte happening here. If I can help, I know probably everybody on this board, from Mr. West, from Mr. Flowers, Rick sang at my wedding, I've known Raymond forever, and you're a Dillard person, Ms. Burton. So I understand, we've got to do something better for these kids. We can't keyhole children. We must know our demographics and present it in the right light. And I want to make sure that we don't have a battle that's going to happen in this county. The kids don't need that either. So if I can help you, let, you, you let me know. But I'm coming to you as a concerned parent, but at the same time, a person who understands what you're going through. So please, let's make a change if we can.
All right, Dr. Mason. And thank you, Mr. Peacock.
Okay. Ms. Bishop? Okay, we're back again to share with you our Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan. We annually review this plan and submit our revisions for approval to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. We also are seeking action for approval from our local board, so that we can submit that with our signature from the board chair on tonight. So this is our 2018-19 Beginner Teacher Support Program. Again, we do have Ms. Brown, who oversees that, along with our two beginning teacher coordinators, our Rebecca Bishop and Jenna McIntosh, that implement dedicated hours to support this for our beginning teachers. Earlier, you heard the numbers from the Title II program to support the beginning teachers. Here's a number of the breakdown of our current beginning teachers. At the first level, year-one beginning teachers, we have 112. Second-year beginning teachers, 98, and year-three, 87. And to support the total beginning teachers, we have the 84 site-based mentors throughout each of the schools that support those beginning teachers. We also provide systematic support for high-quality induction program. Each of our beginning teachers go through an induction-type program. We have a licensure specialist that's assigned to each of the beginning teachers that provide them with their updates on their licensure requirements, any testing requirements that they need to provide. All of the requirements are yearly requirements for that induction, and it's also in the plan that we have provided to you. As Rebecca stated, we keep lots of logs and lots of documentation, lots of sign-in sheets. As Rebecca stated, we keep lots of logs and lots of documentation, lots of signing sheets to ensure that our beginning teachers are attending meetings and also present for the information. We provide multi-tiered support at each of the levels, so the Beginning Teacher Support, Beginning Year Teacher Ones are receiving different induction and support at the year-two level, and our year-threes receive different support as well. Our orientation includes our education partners, our consulting people that we have supported as well to come in and provide professional development, and we also provide our mentors a stipend. A lot of, at the beginning of the year, our beginning teachers go to their three-day Beginning Teacher Support Conference that they have in July, where they have their new teacher orientation. Many of you at the board level come to the breakfast that morning, that's at Lane Tree in collaboration with our Chamber of Commerce. So, we do have a partnership across Wayne County that is invested in supporting our beginning teachers. Standard Two, we have our mentor selection and development support. We have our annual mentor application process, and we have provided that information in detail to the Department of Public Instruction of what our mentor requirements are to meet the needs. We ask that our mentors conduct monthly Beginning Teacher Support Meetings at the school. They assist our BTs with developing professional development plans, or their PDPs, and review and reflect those at the middle and end of the year that go into the NISIS evaluation. They informally observe our beginning teachers and share effective teacher strategies with feedback. They also arrange times for our beginning teachers to observe other teachers in needed areas or grade levels, and sometimes our beginning teachers also go to other schools to observe another teacher if there's not another music teacher at that school or a light grade level, or a light area. Our mentors also promote digital learning competencies by supporting our BTs in the use of technology as a learning tool to maximize instruction. And they also participate as a contributor, facilitator, or presenter for our school district or state online or face-to-face professional development for our BTs, and we have BT Labs that many of our mentors are our lead presenters and showing strategies to other beginning teachers. Our mentor selection and development and support involves mentor committees. They provide opportunities to be mentors and leaders within our program, and our mentors serve on committees that we have established, a professional library committee, social night that we just had the other night at Logan's, where many of our mentors and BTs got together as well, learning labs, and special event committees, where our mentors support and encourage and lead to set up and strategize and plan each of these areas and activities for our beginning teachers. We also have the Edi Consulting Firm Professional Development for our mentors, which is a teacher leadership and a professional growth opportunities to grow our teacher leaders and inspire our mentors to create leaders in our BTs. Standard Three is mentoring for instructional excellence. There is a monthly site-based meeting support, and our Beginning Teacher Coordinators are there to support that and lead that as well. They provide professional goals, they talk about rigor, classroom management, parent communication, Bloom's taxonomy. They provide support and ongoing communication with our beginning teachers at their first parent-teacher conference, how to handle those situations as well, so that they are at ease with many of these areas that beginning teachers may not have experience in. They provide guest speakers, or they are a lot of our guest speakers, and they provide other school-based needs. They also provide differentiated support with individual meetings before and after school and during their planning time. Our mentors do a lot of support and encouragement, and we appreciate all that they do. Our mentors keep learning logs, and they keep logs of their contacts and their communication that they have with their beginning teachers in these meetings and their POCs. Standard Four is our Beginning Teacher Professional Development. As you can see from our pictures, some of those pictures there are taken from the actual workroom and from some of the professional development that we have had, held in our BT workroom this year, and some of the tiered professional development that I spoke about earlier is designed from our Edi Consulting for our BT Ones that are getting lesson planning. Our BT Twos are getting instructional strategies, and our BT Threes are looking at data digs. Our lateral entry Ones are looking at maximizing student engagement, LE Twos, lesson planning as well, and then LE Threes are looking at instructional strategies. Our lateral entry Ones go through an 80-hour lateral entry One orientation, and that is specific to our Beginning Teacher Support Program.
In addition to the orientation, we meet with our lateral entry teachers once per semester, and those meetings are broken down based on the needs of the teachers as well. We meet with lateral entry year-one in one meeting, lateral entry two, and lateral entry three. Another layer of professional development that we have added this year that Dr. Mason referenced earlier is the Wild Card by Wade and Hope King, which is a wonderful professional resource that we have provided for every beginning teacher and mentor in our district. It's about being creative and bringing that spark into the classroom. Standard Five is on formative assessment of the candidates and of our program, and so in order to make sure that we are performing in that area of Standard Five, we are monitored every five years by the Department of Public Instruction. Each year, our Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan is reviewed by and approved by the board as well as DPI. We participate in a peer review process, and that process actually takes place at our ILCC regional meetings that are facilitated by our regional education facilitator from the Department of Public Instruction. We collect a lot of, we have many numerous documents that we collect each year that are required to show that our BTs have gone through a successful induction program over that three-year course so that in their fourth year that we can move them from that initial license and convert to a continuing license. So, we document a lot of things, and we do that on a yearly basis. And then eventually, their BT file, which is the documentation that we house each and every year, becomes part of their personnel file so that it is a permanent record. And this is the highlights of the plan, I think, that we have already shared with you. If you have any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Henderson?
First of all, could you tell me what criteria you use to determine who should be a mentor and who shouldn't?
So, in the packet, it stated that the principals select that. They get a application, and it is determined by the principal if they see that this mentor is a leader, and there is an application rubric in there that they use and that they get annually.
And is that mentor coming from that school, that the principal?
From that school, yes.
Okay.
From that school.
And can you tell me a little bit more about your data dig? What is that program?
So, with Edi Consulting and the data dig information that is presented, the teachers look at formative and informative assessments, and they look at what you use during that time to determine how to group your students. How would you use instruction after giving an assessment to assist the students in building upon that content or that objective that they haven't mastered? So, Edi Consulting, their presenters provide different examples for the BTs to work with to determine how to look at data and go deeper so that the children can continue to grow from each assessment.
Okay, and can you tell me why data dig is only for your beginning teachers in the third year and not in the first or second year?
So, when we looked at our survey data from last year, we periodically surveyed our beginning teachers to determine what their needs were. And so, our Beginning Teacher One often presented that lesson planning and classroom management was the biggest area that they had concerns with. So, as we looked at each cohort of teachers, because last year we did meet with Beginning Ones, Beginning Twos, Beginning Threes teachers, the Beginning Teacher in their third year often have confidence in the lesson planning format, whatever that is at the school, the classroom management, and sometimes also looking at the curriculum. However, when it comes to how do I grow as a teacher and how do I move from that expected growth to exceeding growth, that's when we decided that that third-year teacher, as they move out of the Beginning Teacher Program, we want them to have a handle on how to move from that assessment on to deeper understanding of growth.
And with the, one of the areas that I see us being very deficient in a lot of times is actually data and interpretation of data, and that's not only just with beginning teachers, but with lateral entry teachers. I would hope, I would request that you look at that a little bit more, because I think that that is something that we as a system need to employ more strategies on so that the teachers can understand what data is really telling them.
Thank you.
Dr. Mason? Wild Card by Wade and Hope King, is that a book of some type?
It is, yes, sir.
Do you have extra copies?
I do.
That we might could have a copy to read?
I can get a copy for all of you, yes, sir. It is a very good book.
It's obvious that it's a very, it's an instrumental tool in
It is.
The learning process for the teachers.
Absolutely.
I'd love to read it.
Yes, sir. We'll get a copy for all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Flowers?
Dr. Mason, I'd like to make a comment. I, some years ago, I was invited out to one of our elementary schools by the principal to look at some of the new construction that was happening out there, and when I was there, she asked me what I interviewed with three of her beginning teachers. Two of them were first-year teachers, and the second one was a second year, or the third one was a second-year teacher. So, they asked me a lot of questions that I really didn't have a lot of answers for, but then I asked them, but they, all of them seemed to be happy with all of the help that they were receiving from these programs and everything. Nobody seemed to have a problem with the support they were getting. But I asked them, I said, well, as a beginning teacher, what's the most difficult thing you faced, and what's, you know, the most frustrating? And believe it or not, almost across the board, they all told me that they didn't have enough supplies, and as a beginning teacher, that the textbooks that they had oftentimes did not teach what was on the end-of-grade test because maybe they were outdated or somewhat. So, they were having to download things off the Internet for handouts and stuff like that, and they ran out of paper, and they ran out of copy ink and things like that. And sometimes the mentor would actually maybe come up here, there was somewhere where they, might have been, I can't remember exactly, but they went somewhere and made copies for the beginning teachers. So, I'm just sharing that with you. It seems, we've talked about that and talked about it in classroom supplies, and there seems to be a whole lot of different opinions about that, but, and this may be a little bit off course of what it is, but I mean, if the goal is to help our beginning teachers and support them, then that's what I was told, and they might would tell me something that they wouldn't tell you. I don't know, so I'm just sharing that with you.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Straight one.
Thank you. I know that the Title II presentation and the Beginning Teacher presentation, it's similar but not completely meshed. So, if my questions don't make sense, I apologize. But looking at both of these, it looks like all of the Title II funding, or back up. Let me start with, do you know why there's a reduction in the $28,000 from last year to this year?
Yes, they had major federal cuts in the budget across
So, that was just a straight across-the-board, less money per student?
Yes.
Okay, easy enough. Second, is that $717 in the Title II funding, is that all of the Title II funding that we have?
That's, yes.
Okay, and then that money with this Beginning Teacher Program that you just put off is, or presented, is all of that money, all that we have in that program, or is there additional funds being used to help with that program as well?
So, there is, there's additional funds. There's a little bit extra carry, it's actually some of the carryover money that we may use to support additional professional development.
Okay, but it's not something that we're maybe pulling from local funds or?
None, none. All of that is Title II.
And I'm honestly not fishing, I'm
Right, yes.
Curious.
Sure, all of that is Title II.
Okay, and then so, and here is the fishing, the question that I have. Would you be able to get us a generic outline like you gave us here for like the last two to three years so we can see how these things are trending?
Sure.
And send that out? That would be wonderful.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Job well done. Okay, thank you. Now, I think we have to vote on this?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time?
No, it's later in the, later in the
Later, under the
Under the action.
Action plan. Okay. Now, I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Are there any changes first?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Finally.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as scheduled.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, we need to vote on the minutes for the October 1st, 2018 board meeting. Do I have a motion?
No move. Second.
All right, is there any discussion? If not, if all in favor of approving the minutes of October 1st, please raise your hand, right hand. Any opposed? Thank you.
Ms. Burden?
Yes.
Would you be okay if I tried to group C through I in my next motion, or would you prefer we continue to go through these individually? Here's my motion then, and then you can let me know what you want to do with it.
If anyone, does anyone have any concerns about the closed session minutes from October 1st?
Well, and that's actually what I was going to do. There's two that I'd like to leave closed.
Okay, then I think you need to do it separate.
Okay.
And you're going to give me a motion for the
Well, I'll, I'll, let's go ahead and say, I would like to approve letters C and D, make a motion to approve C and D.
And are you asking that the closed session minutes
That is a closed session, with those closed session minutes from October 1st being opened.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion stands that we approve the closed session minutes of October 1st, leaving them, having them be open, and the approval of the minutes from October 18th. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right.
Ms. Burden, I'd like to make a motion that we approve letter E, but leave the minutes closed.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of approving the closed session minutes for October 18th, but leaving them closed, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to try this one. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve F through I, opening the closed session minutes from G, and leaving closed the closed session minutes from I.
Ma'am?
Yes.
None?
Madam Chair, it might be easier to take these one at a time.
All right.
I've got some changes on some of these.
Okay.
Changes?
All right, so we're beginning with F. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22nd board meeting?
So, I'm
Second. All right. All in favor, well, is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of October 22nd, 2018, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve G and open the minutes for a closed session on October 22nd.
Madam Chair, with regard to, go ahead and get a second on that.
Yes, I Yes, I was getting ready to say, I need a second. Okay, thank you, Mr. West. Yes, sir.
With regard to those closed session minutes, on page two, at the beginning of the second paragraph, the third word, the word "that," T-H-A-T, should not be in there. And I would suggest that these remain closed due to confidential legal content?
All right.
On page two.
Any other concerns? Ms. Strickland?
Let me look back at them. But I just, when I read them the first time, I didn't catch anything on that one. But if the attorney says they're better to leave closed, then we'll leave them closed.
All right. Are we ready for the vote? Any discussion?
I would amend my motion then to leave them closed.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve the closed session minutes for October 22nd with the changes, and we will leave them closed. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
So, she didn't need a second for that motion?
Oh, I thought I had a second. You didn't give me a second?
I did divorce one, but I
Oh, I'm sorry, because she amended.
But I'll make them, I'll second this.
Your second? Okay. Then all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you very much for correcting me. Any opposed? All right. And H, approval of minutes October 30th, 2018.
I just stopped saying that.
I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 30th, 2018.
Okay. Any discussion?
Need a second. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes of October 30th, 2018, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, I, approval of closed session minutes October 30th, 2018. I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve letter I, the closed session minutes of October 30th, but remain closed.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, J. Okay. We have a proclamation.
Yes, ma'am, and I can go ahead and read that if you would like. This is the proclamation for our school psychologists. This is the National Association of School Psychologists. Whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that helps to develop their sense of belonging to a team at home and at school. And whereas schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn and invested in their learning when they meet the needs of the whole child, and encourage and provide opportunities to be part of a team. And whereas every student's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and the learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychology has over 60 years of well-established, widely-recognized, and highly-effective practice and standards that are clearly articulated in the National Association of School Psychologists' model for comprehensive and integrated school psychology services. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas school psychologists help students to become members of teams that nurture their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. And whereas school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize database decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and approve accountability. And whereas we should recognize the vital roles that school psychologists play in personal and academic development of our students. Now, therefore be it resolved that Duane County Board of Education supports 2018 National Association of School Psychologists by recognizing November 2018 as the month of school psychology and 2018 NASP
Theme.
Theme, hang on.
National Association of School
Yeah. And I unfortunately do not have, mine cut off there.
All right, it's the, the National Association of School Psychologists theme of unlock potential, find your password.
Thank you. And that is signed by our chairperson, Ms. Patricia Burden, Wayne County Public Education Board of Education, and Dr. Michael Dunsmore, the Secretary, Wayne County Superintendent. And I just want to add to my thank you for all of our school psychologists and our interns. I don't think a lot of people realize the amount of education those folks go through. It's very time-consuming. And as Mrs. Ivy highlighted with our interns coming in, they have to do a year of internship under a certified psychologist to learn the job before they can even be considered for a full-time position. So, those folks over there do a wonderful, wonderful job.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just an editorial change, you'll look up the third, "whereas" at the bottom, you need to correct that spell.
Okay, you see it, so we can correct that. We will correct it. Could I, we have, at least have our psychologists and the intern please stand again, and let's give them a round of applause for all the work they did. Thank you very much. And for those of you that came in a little later, Mrs. Ivy did present a presentation giving us some updates on what we are doing here in Wayne County for our students and staff. At this time, we will have spotlight, Mrs. Bowdenhouse?
You need a vote on the motion.
Yes.
Oh, I have to approve it? Okay. Hold on, Ms. Bowdenhouse. Do I have a motion to approve?
And a second.
And a second. All right. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Thank you. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Bowdenhouse.
If our CDCs will come forward. Also have a proclamation to read from the governor. And whereas career development coordinators in career and technical education, CTE programs in North Carolina's public schools are committed to helping students explore their potential in personal, social development, educational achievement, and lifelong learning, and career management within the North, within the National Career Development Guidelines framework. And whereas career development coordinators provide the supporting materials to ensure our schools meet the national standards and competencies established by the National Career Development Association. And whereas career development coordinators support the mission of North Carolina's CTE programs by providing community resources and services that help students succeed in life, college, and/or careers, citizen readiness, and as productive members of society. And whereas career development coordinators empower students to make informed decisions regarding their post-high school plans, which may include immediate employment in a civilian or military occupation, or further education at a vocational program, community college, or university. And whereas career development coordinators support the work of career and technical student organizations, extending student learning based on instructional competencies, career development education can contribute to increased attendance, raise achievement, and improve graduation rates. And whereas career development coordinators assist students in understanding the 16 career clusters in the National Career Clusters Framework, which is made up of 79 career pathways to success in college, career, and citizen readiness. Through career development education, CTE students gain the critical thinking, creativity, problem-solving, leadership, and interpersonal skills necessary to thrive in the modern business world and to contribute to the vitality of our state and nation. Now, therefore, I, Roy Cooper, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as North Carolina Career Development Month. And November 14, 2018, was the National Career Development Coordinator Day in North Carolina, and commend observance to all citizens. And he has his seal on the proclamation.
Okay. Are you asking me to call out the name?
Yes, ma'am, please.
All right. All right. The first vote goes to Mrs. Joy Yeverton, and it reads, "Certificate of recognition awarded to Joy Yeverton for dedicated service to North Carolina career and technical education students in support of their career development and the observance of Career Development Month during November 2018 and Career Development Coordinator Day on November 14, 2018." Congratulations. Okay. All right. And the certificate reads the same, and this is awarded to Nancy Walker. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you do. All right. This certificate is awarded to Kimberly Whitfield. All right. This is to Lisa Page.
She's not here tonight.
She's not here? Okay. Wait a minute, am I missing one? All right, Tasha Sneed. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. And this is yours.
Beverly Bowden.
Mrs. Beverly Bowdenhouse. And we thank you very much for all that you do as director for CTE. Thank you.
Beverly did one hour. Appreciate it.
See? All right, next time I want to try it. Okay. So, we're back to
Letter K.
Letter K. All right, at this time, the board is required to approve the Wayne County Public School Beginning Teacher Support Program for 2018, 2019, which was presented by Dr. Mason. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Wayne County Public Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program for the year 2018, 2019.
I need a second. Second. Any discussion at this time? All in favor of approving the Wayne County Public Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan for 2018, 2019, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, carried. So, now we need a signature. Is that correct? Okay. All right, and school improvement plan? And that is coming to us from Dr. Carol Otis.
Madam Chair, Dr. Dunsmore, members of the board, earlier during the month, I gave you access via NC Star to review the district improvement plan, as well as the school improvement plans for all schools. Just in a small recap, the district improvement plan still has ongoing goals in curriculum resources and recruiting and retaining high, highly effective personnel. We are also implementing goals in school improvement and adjoining that process with our advanced ed accreditation review that is coming up. We are doing that through district initiatives, walkthroughs, supporting low-performing schools, and through federal programs. A final goal for the district improvement plan will be to maintain and increase communication with stakeholders. Within the school improvement plans, you will find all of the goals come from the following dimensions: instructional excellence and alignment, high expectations for staff; instructional excellence and alignment, high expectations for students; instructional planning; student support services; mission and vision; distributed leadership and collaboration; teacher quality and professional development. Additionally, there may be sub-goals in resource allocation, facilities and technology, family engagement, and community engagement. You have had access to the district improvement plan, knowing that it is a draft, it is always evolving as things are done, strategies are implemented, and data is gathered, that plan is amended throughout the year. The same is true for the school site plans. As their school improvement teams meet, and they meet twice monthly, they get data, they get input from all stakeholders, and those programs are amended. For our low-performing schools, we will be pressing submit on November 30th, so that they will go to DPI. We will get feedback for those plans and then resubmit finally in mid-December. So, we need for those plans to have an initial approval from the Board of Education tonight.
Okay. Based on her presentation first, are there any questions? All right. We need a motion to approve the school improvement plan for 2018, 2019.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the school improvement plans for 2018, 2019.
I either need a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the school improvement plans for 2018, 2019, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a memorandum, memorandum of agreement, Wayne County Sheriff's Office and Rosewood High School.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We presented to the board, actually, Dr. Manning did on my behalf last month, and this is our next step forward into having the public safety, law enforcement classes at Rosewood High School. And we met with the sheriff, and we have come up with the memorandum of agreement, and the attorneys have also reviewed it.
Okay, so what you need is a vote.
It's approval, yes, ma'am. So, we can move forward.
Are there any questions or comments to be made to Mrs. Bowdenhouse? All right, I need a motion, please, to approve the memorandum.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor of the memorandum of agreement for, I have law enforcement program here, because I have it written different on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were making a comment to me. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, any opposed? All right.
Can I ask one question as it relates to this to Ms. Bowdenhouse? I noticed that this is only like a six-month, so is this like a trial that you're doing to see how much
And you do it generally for each school year, and with this program starting in January, that's why it's for six months.
All right, Dr. Mason?
We are looking at the minutes and looking at the, I'm sorry, the policies.
Yeah, the first reads N through T.
I think we could take these
They're all first reads.
Yes, they are. All the first reads together, unless you have questions or comments.
Just one comment on one of them, and that's the question, so we can still do them together.
Yes.
On the first one, 2123, we had made a correction on paragraph three, that it would say, not the annual 12-hour training, it would be, we came up with a pretty wording.
Encourage to earn more credits annually.
No, it's the part where it's referencing the annual 12-hour training requirement, it's not
It should have been toward the 12 hours.
Where's the minutes of who?
We do, can I, I mean, it's in your notes. We do, I mean, it's in your notes, is all I'm saying, from that meeting. That needs to be updated, that was all.
Does it reflect what we talked about?
No.
No, it just needs to be updated to what we had spoken about.
We can add that if you want to make that part here.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that it was seen.
We're not voting on this one tonight.
No, this is the first read.
No, but I didn't want to forget it between now and then.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that was N, right? So we want them to check that before we have a second read.
Check our notes.
But now we're going to approve, do I have a motion?
The next one for approval is the one that's got the asterisk, will be R.
All the way down to R. The first read, we don't have to approve them.
It's just first reading, so you don't need...
We don't have to approve.
All right, so we're going to go down to R. All right, R is the first read, but we're asking that it be approved now. For policy 4152.
Which one?
That's R.
Okay, I got a staple on there.
Unsafe school choice transfer.
And there was a reason. Do you have it in your notes of why we had it as a first?
Well, it was a legal reference.
Legal reference, that was the only change.
Yes, that's correct.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the unsafe school choice transfer, policy 4152, effective tonight.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
You need a motion to waive your policy requiring two readings?
All right.
We'll do that too.
And I'll second that as well.
We have to go back, go back.
You can make a motion...
That we waive our first reading on policy 4152 for unsafe school choice transfer so that we can vote on it tonight.
Do you want to make that for items R, S, and T?
R, S, and T.
Well, I can do that.
R, S, and T.
And on policy 6315, driver's first reading, and on policy 7450 for extracurricular, non-instructional duties first read, to be voted on tonight.
Second.
All right. Unless there's any discussion, all in favor of policy 4152, policy 6315, and policy 7450 being approved on a first read.
Now, this is a motion to waive the policy requiring two readings, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
All right.
It's just a suspension.
All in favor of waiving the policy to approve on the first read, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve policy number 4152, unsafe school transfers for the first reading, also policy 6315, driver's first reading, and also policy number 7450, item T, extracurricular, non-instructional duties first reading.
All right.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. And we now have the consent agenda.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
Madam Chairman, I'd request to be recused from item number B, general personnel report, and have that voted on separately, but would like to vote on item C, D, and E.
All right. All right, so we need to, I need a motion to approve...
To pull general personnel.
To pull the general personnel report from the consent agenda.
To be voted on separately.
To be voted on separately.
I do have a family member whose name is on that.
Okay.
Does this count as the motion? Because I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, then.
All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. All right. Opposed? Okay. So now we can go back and vote on item B. Is that correct? So I need a motion to approve the general personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The vote should be recorded as 6-0 with Mr. Pridgen excused.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We pulled.
We had to approve his not voting, we pulled B, and then we voted on B without Mr. Pridgen.
But I thought the earlier motion was to approve C, D, and E.
No, it was to excuse Mr. Pridgen.
Excuse Mr. Pridgen. All right, so now we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve items C, D, and E under the consent agenda. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we have... All right. Board members, superintendent comments. Let's begin with Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only have a few items that I'd like to make mention of. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Demetius Smith and the staff of Brogdon Middle School for working its way off of the comprehensive support and improvement list this year. That's a major accomplishment for us, and I think that Dr. Smith is doing an excellent job at Brogdon, and I hope that that work continues. Secondly, I'd like to give congratulations to my fellow board members that have won reelection, Mr. Chris West, Jennifer Strickland, and hopefully Mr. Rick Pridgen if all goes well tomorrow, right? So congratulations on being re-elected to the board. Like to congratulate Mr. Raymond Smith, now our representative to the North Carolina House. So we've got somebody that will be right there to fight for us all the way. And lastly, I would be remiss if I did not speak up regarding an issue that, the article that was in the newspaper regarding the Board of Education and the county commissioners. I do want to let them know that the Board of Education has not changed any of its positions on anything that has been done. It appeared in the newspaper that there seemed to be some issues between the two boards. I would just like to say that we need to get together and sit down and talk about it face-to-face. Thank you.
Mr. Pridgen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'd like to as well congratulate Mr. West and Ms. Strickland on your elections and being re-elected to the Board of Education. And I don't know about me, but we'll find out more tomorrow, I guess. But anyway, and Raymond... Man, you've got your hands full. But I know you will represent us well, especially in education in Raleigh, and I know that we'll be in contact with you constantly, and we appreciate your tenure on the board and what you've stood for and what you've done. And Mr. Flowers, I just want to tell you, you know, you and I have butted heads a time or two, but this is your last meeting tonight, and I have enjoyed working with you, I've enjoyed our dialogue. I think you're a very smart businessman, I think you have brought a lot of things to the table that we needed to know, especially when it came to finance and other matters of interest, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I wish you well in your endeavors with your future and your grandchildren and anything else that you endeavor to do. But thank you for your service to the Wayne County Commissioners when you served there, and thank you for the service to our Board of Education, I certainly do appreciate it. And if y'all want some good honey, this man makes the best honey there is in Wayne County. His bees do, let's put it that way. But anyway, but I do appreciate the presentations tonight. I look forward to reading the wild card, I think that's a, that'll be very helpful in understanding what kind of training that our new teachers or beginning teachers are going through. And with that, Madam Chairman, I had a great conference in Greensboro, I enjoyed it, I learned a lot. I can actually say that I went to one session that I didn't particularly care for, but the rest of the sessions I went to were very good. Thank you.
Ms. Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As always, I intend to just say no comments and move on, but then I get reminded of things as we go. And one of them was Mr. Flowers, it completely slipped my mind that tonight was your last meeting, and I apologize, but thank you, it has been a pleasure working with you the last four years, and you will be missed on the board, but I expect you to be at some other meetings that I'll get to harass you at. I also fully expect pictures to be shown around of those grandchildren as Christmas rolls around. That's what I figured.
He showed me one of the men's rooms.
It's a little TMI. Secondly, I do want to say thank you to all of the teachers and administrators for what they have done. We have just come off of the long break from the hurricanes, and they have had to dive back in and get these kids ready as we roll up to the holidays, where they'll have another break and then have to come back and do exams. And so thank you for your hard work. I know that I have seen a change in my students in my house this year, a lot more dedication, a lot more drive, and it is completely driven by the quality of the teachers that they have, and I am very grateful for my teachers that my children all have. And lastly, Mr. Peacock, thank you for coming out and speaking about the Making Proud Choices textbook, the curriculum that we have for our sex ed program. I have been trying to inform the board about this curriculum now for about a year, and I think that with what I know is coming as well, maybe the board members might take the opportunity to get their hands on a textbook and read it for themselves. Don't read it with young children around. And those are all of my comments.
Mr. Smith?
Congratulations to all candidates who won their races, and congratulations to anyone who dared enter a race. It takes a special person to be willing to put him or herself out front and subject themselves to the ridicule and the acclaim that comes along with running for public office. So my hats off to each and every one of you. Mr. Flowers, you've been a great mentor. You have, you've given me some really good advice the time that we've worked together, and I hope to continue to pick your brain on issues as they arise in the future, and I really appreciate your leadership. To the rest of the board, board attorney, superintendent, thank you all, appreciate it. I told Ms. Strickland the other day, I just might decide to relinquish my seat at the House and stay here, and she's like, no, you don't, so...
I said no such thing, I just smiled, and she's all I did, because I know better.
But it has been a great learning experience, and I will continue to be a part of this community because I will be representing this community, so stay tuned, I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam.
No, Mr. Flowers, let me excuse you, save the best for last. All right.
You sure?
Our attorney. Any comments?
No comments.
Mr. West?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say, I thank you for the thanks for everyone, and congratulations to each and every one of you. And I would like to thank the supporters in District One for their continued support and vote for the job that their district representative does for them on this board, and I'll continue to be an advocate for every child, parent, teacher, principal, and the administrative officers up here. It's been a pleasure for me for eight years. I'm going to lose my colleague to my right right here, Mr. Flowers. I would like to say he and I go back a lot further than eight years ago, we've known each other quite some time. Even though we don't agree on everything, we've always found a way to get along and agree to disagree. I'll try to come up with something better, but everybody uses that term, but anyway, Mr. Flowers has been good serving with you, and as Mr. Smith said, I have to call on him once in a while. My father passed away years ago, and I try to call Mr. Flowers once in a while to make sure he keeps me well-grounded, some things where I'm kind of excited about, so, but anyway, I'll just tell you this, if you get, if you buy, or he happens to give you any honey, make sure you get some wine to go with, because he makes good wine, too, so...
Can you sell that, Chris?
Yeah, well, he can give you the wine, so, but anyway, thank you for your service, Mr. Flowers, you'll be missed. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to invite the employees of Wayne County Public Schools, as well as the public, to the Choral Ensemble at Goldsboro High School, which starts tomorrow night. I know there's another engagement tomorrow night that some of us are probably need to be at and obligated to go to, but I've been to this Choral Ensemble at Goldsboro High School for the last eight years, I don't think I've missed a year, and it's three nights, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, starts at 6:00 PM. But these kids and the staff worked really hard for this presentation, Ms. Copeland does a good job putting it together, and I'd just like to invite anybody who hasn't ever been, and those who have been, to continue to come and support the arts, and it's well worth the three nights, and it's well worth the time that you spend there. And that's all I have, Ms. Burden.
Okay, well, let's hold on a moment for Mr. Flowers, but I'd like to just say applause go out to Demetius Smith for the outstanding job that she has done in covering one hurdle and working strongly toward another, and it says a lot about her leadership and the work of the staff at that school that they have done so well. Congratulations to all of the candidates running for the Board of Education that were elected, and Mr. Smith, I know that Mrs. Thelma Smith is smiling in heaven. I don't know if she ever thought that this would happen, but I know that she would be very, very proud of you for the work that you've done and the new journey that you will be on, and I know that you're not going to forget Goldsboro, Wayne County, because you will be serving us, but we sure hope that you will speak up and change some minds up there, particularly about education. Mr. West indicated about the three nights of our choral groups performing, but also on Thursday, November 29th, from 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM, there will be the 22nd Annual Empowering Parents for Student Success Seminar that is sponsored by Wayne County Public Schools' Federal Programs Department, and they will have a guest speaker and a variety of different sessions for parents and community members to attend. So I just wanted to note that, and that is this Thursday, 9:00 AM, and that is going to be held at School Street School as we know it, but our Wayne County Public Schools' Professional Development and Family Engagement Center on Virginia Street. I think that was all. Now, Dr. Dunsmore, you want me to save you for last, and Mr. Flowers next?
No, we'll save Mr. Flowers the best for last. I don't, as always, I want to thank everybody, I hope everybody had a nice holiday. My wife and I, she got a little out of control buying flowers, so these are from us, take them along, and hopefully they'll brighten up the holidays a little bit for you.
They begin the holidays, thank you. Oh, is that all?
That's all.
All right, Mr. Flowers?
Y'all sure have built me up to a crescendo here, like I'm, I wasn't going to make any comment, no, seriously. I want to thank everybody, all my board members, past and present, for your camaraderie and our time together. I've never been in service, but some of these jobs is like a tour duty, you know, like you hear people be in, been to Vietnam, and I had a lot of friends, and they said, well, I was on a tour duty, so, I have served two tour duties, but thank you for that. Thank the all administrative staff for your patience with me. I ask a lot of questions sometimes, and thank you for that, for all your patience with me. One of the hardest things I had to come over was all the acronyms we use, and, but, you know, you get them after a while, I guess. But I want to congratulate all of our elected officials, Jennifer, and Chris, and Raymond. Good luck, Mr. Pridgen.
Good luck, Mr. Pridgen. You know, if the Lord means for it to happen, it will for you. If it goes to Mr. Latron, Wade Latron, your opponent, then he may have done you a favor, right? I, I do want to say that, you know, in a, anytime you serve on a board like this, you know, you go back and reflect, and of course, I had time to reflect during the last few days, about, you know, all the good things that happened during your time, and then things that I won't say are bad, but things that you wanted to happen that didn't. And so, I can truthfully say that I'm extremely proud, and I don't mean proud in a prideful way, I mean, proud like you're proud of your grandchildren, of the fact that we were able to build the middle schools with auditoriums at Granton and at Spring Creek. Now, we did other projects, too, and not taking anything away from those, but those two communities desperately needed those schools, and they desperately needed them with an auditorium to bring people together. We were able to build State at Arts School, and I'm really proud that we were able to accomplish that. Now, when you talk about things that you're not proud of, I have been an advocate since I got, actually, since I was on the Board of Commissioners, I formed the opinion that we need to redraw school district lines. We've never been able to do that. That attests to the fact that it's a really difficult thing to do. But moving forward, I hope that the upcoming board is able to make some progress on that, because I still, you know, am of the opinion that that would be helpful to Wayne County in a lot of different ways. It's always controversial to do that, but I still think it will be helpful to our school system. And lastly, I want to praise God for him allowing me to do this, and thank the citizens for giving me the opportunity. I don't know where I'll go from here, I probably, in all probability, will try to help raise my grandchildren. When they come to my house, by the way, I have eight now, and I have one on the way, so, when they came to my house, and all of them are there doing Thanksgiving. Just so y'all know, we generally go on what we call a great adventure. And we go on a quest and things like that, so we, I do have a lot of them with my grandchildren. I have a lot of hobbies, I think y'all have expressed some of them, I do make wine, and I do beekeeping, so I've got plenty of things like that to keep me busy, and I look forward to spending more time with that. But I think it's time for me to move on now. Dr. Joe DiMarco is gonna be taking my place, and Wayne County is very fortunate, he is a very dynamic young man, I think that he will be an excellent board member. He's very engaging to talk to, and so I'm excited about him coming on and taking my place. So, thank you all again, thank you, Wayne County. God bless you, I hope you have a Merry Christmas, and if I ever hurt anybody's feelings or embarrassed you, I'm sorry, I hope we can still be friends. Thanks.
Now, we need you to come back next week, next month, you thought this was your last meeting. I thought so, too, but then I will have my comments to make, Mr.
I get the official boot then, huh?
Yes, you get the official boot then, yes, formal presentation. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir?
Thank you very much. I know there's no discussion, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand.